This meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education in order, please stand for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
We thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. Be with us tonight in all the decisions we make. Provide us wisdom and guidance in all that takes place. Be with those that serve and protect us here and around the world tonight. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Adams, would you call the roll please?
Donald S. Hayes?
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols?
Here.
Jess A. Kanon?
Kami J. Fabel?
Here.
Lisa Isa?
Here.
Edward B. Higgins?
Here.
Bruce T. Shaw?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is approval of the agenda. Any changes, deletions?
I would just have you note the deletion of item A. That'll come back next month. We're still working on some of the detail though now. Under new business.
Okay, under new business. That's the only change.
That's the only change.
Motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Item three, approval of the minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes from May the 31st, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approved. Item B, minutes from our regular meeting minutes from June the 7th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? They're approved. Item four, recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Our first recognition this evening is very special, and it is for those who participated in North Carolina DPI's Give Five Read Five program. And here in New Hanover County, we had the good fortune to have Mrs. Tennis Nelson working with that program for us. She coordinated our whole New Hanover County Schools book collection, and I'm going to ask Mrs. Nelson to come up and explain the program and what happened here in New Hanover County Schools. Mrs. Nelson?
Thank you, Ms. Quattlebaum, Superintendent Markley, members of the board. The first countywide Give Five Read Five project was a tremendous success. The statewide project started in 2013 with by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, which urged schools and communities throughout North Carolina to collect new and used children's books during the month of May and distribute them to children in the low-performing schools. Harvard studies and other research shows that a child who reads at least five books over the summer retains most of their literacy skills for the upcoming school year. Now, I know those of you on the board didn't need a Harvard study to give you the value of reading. You know the value of reading and also of having books in the home. Now, up until this year, New Hanover County Schools had not participated in the system-wide project. Other systems were collecting 50,000 and 100,000 books for their projects. So, when I learned this, I called Dr. Holliday to determine if this would be a project that the schools may embrace. He was so very encouraging and immediately agreed to help me, actually enthusiastically agreed to help me, and he contacted all of the principals and kept them informed of the dates and all the drop-off sites and tolerated my "I want it done yesterday" attitude. I do have a small token of appreciation for him for tolerating me during that time. But anyway, over 20,000, 20,000 new and used books were collected and distributed to children in our county in June for summer reading. Craig Myatt, who couldn't be here this evening, the owner of Seaside Linen and Rental Company donated the vans and the drivers and the manpower to pick up and deliver the books. The project would absolutely have not been possible without his dedication and hard work. I also want to thank, and I don't know if you're here, Philip Sutton, Heather Byers, Wanda Seed, Dave Spencer, and his administrative assistant, Lenora Bellamy, who agreed to assist in the drop-off, with the drop-off sites, and also Mrs. Quattlebaum, who helped by posting the information about the project on the internet. Principals did a phenomenal job with this project in encouraging our students, their families, and our community to donate these books, and I'm so very pleased that you're going to recognize them this evening. Thank you.
So we couldn't let Tennis go away without recognizing her from the board to thank you for your efforts on the project and for consistently being an advocate for our students, Ms. Nelson. So we present you with a certificate of recognition.
If you'll wait at the end, we'll let everybody for one group photo.
Right. And also, we know Greg Myatt from Seaside Linen and Rental helped pick up 20,000 books, and we have a certificate for him. We know he can't be here, but if you would give that to him for us?
Happy to.
Thank you. So another round of applause for Ms. Nelson, please. And now, we would like to recognize those schools who did the hard work of collecting the books for our neediest students. Our first school is Ashley High School. Blair Elementary School. If the school isn't represented, we'll just move on. Castle Hayne Elementary School. There's Ms. Bliss and her team.
Now they get an official certificate because they collected more than 50 books.
How many did you collect, Ms. Bliss?
1,001.
Wow! Okay, Cottington Elementary School. Mr. Vermin or anyone from Cottington here? The Career Readiness Academy at Mosley? Uh-oh. There's Cottington.
We have their new assistant principal.
Thank you. Now the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Mr. Pearson. College Road Early Childhood Center, CREC? They just had a baby, okay. Hopefully he'll get some books. Forest Hills Global Elementary School. Ms. Bonnie Hall. Next, the Great Hargard High School. See, I call them great, they're not here. Okay. Holly Tree Elementary School. Mrs. Holliday and staff. Murray Middle School. Mr. Sutton or some team member? Ogden Elementary School. No? Parsley Elementary. Dr. Hamilton could not be here tonight, but she sent Ms. Rizzo and Lucy Wilcox are here to accept on behalf of Parsley Elementary. Next up, our Great Snipes Academy. Ms. Nancy Taverna is here on behalf of Snipes. Williston Middle School. Mr. Ron Valance is here. Next, we have the Great Winter Park Elementary School, home of Mr. Hayes. And our last school in this recognition is Wrightsville Beach Elementary School. Is Mr. Norble here? Okay, there we have it, our great book collectors. You're right, Dr. Markley, double.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. Still driving that car.
Yeah, I'm supposed to get off next week.
Ready?
Oh, we're still going.
Our next recognition is for two schools who received the Healthy School Awards from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation for making changes that promote healthy eating and physical activity for students and staff. So our first winner is a school that won the 2016 Silver National Healthy School Award, and that school is Roland Grice Middle School. Congratulations, Dr. Pinto. And next, we have the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. They won the 2016 Bronze National Healthy Schools Award. Mr. Pearson. Mosley's hot tonight. Okay, for this next award, I want someone to grab hold of Dr. Holliday, and you'll see why in a minute. This is our final recognition of the evening, and it's for a young lady by the name of Madison Bonzer. Madison recently graduated from Ashley High School, and she was honored for exemplary volunteer service with the President's Volunteer Service Award. This award recognizes those who have volunteered significant amounts of their time to serve their communities. Madison volunteers once a week, and she does pet therapy at a local assisted living facility, and she has worked in the Alzheimer's and dementia wings there. And Madison will be pursuing a degree in occupational therapy at East Carolina University in the fall. If Madison is here, we'd like to recognize you. If your family's here, would you please stand to recognize this outstanding young lady? This is such an amazing recognition. And she's going to ECU. Go Pirates. Now, y'all hold my friend there. And finally, our recognition ceremony this evening will end with a presentation by Mr. Tim Fields, who's the co-founder and chief technology officer of the Education App, who will make a presentation to us that we will love.
I like coming to these because we're bringing you a check every time. So it's a little bit different company, the way we work. This time, we're delivering you a check for $19,500. We're also, I got a packet for each of the board members for the stats for this year, how many users it grew to. It grew to over 188,000 users. Every state in the United States has downloaded these apps except for one, which was Wyoming. Can't figure it out. Must not be a lot of people in Wyoming. But a lot of education people have contacted us all over the country because of what's happening here. We're building a lot more universities now also. We just finished up Cape Fear Community College. They're coming onboard this year. So this type of technology is being really thought about a lot, just because you guys did it for the first year. We've also been contacted by CBS 60 Minutes to do a story on these systems, because they see it as a new future for school systems to really be able to capture the markets of your localization around your county. So we're real excited. We were very fortunate to have worked with you this year. We look forward to working with you more. We've got a lot of new technological advances. We'll be going over with Don in the next week of new tooling and stuff for teachers that we've developed and got feedback from other school systems and stuff that have talked to us about things the schools will need. So we're looking forward to continuing development and giving you new products this next school year.
Thank you.
Next item, item five. I call to the audience with the agenda items. We've had no one sign up, so item six, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendations. Dr. Markley.
All right, it is that time of year. We've got some changes, and so we have a few more than we typically would have, so let's get moving. First recommendation is for pre-kindergarten principal at the Johnson Pre-K Center. As you know, Mr. Hatch is retiring effective at the end of this month. It is my pleasure to recommend Rachel Greer. Currently, Mrs. Greer is an assistant principal at Bradley Creek. She previously served at Lincoln Charter School as a principal, also served as an elementary lead teacher and principal and ESL teacher in Hendersonville, North Carolina. In addition, she served as an interim teacher in California. Her administrative contract will begin July 18th and be in effect until June 30th, 2018. She has an AA in liberal arts from Palomar College with a minor, and also a BA in liberal studies with a minor in history from Cal State San Marcos College of Arts and Science, teaching credentials from Cal State San Marcos as well, and a master's degree in school administration from Western Carolina. It is my pleasure to recommend Mrs. Greer for Johnson Pre-K.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Approved.
Ms. Greer, if you'll stand up. Introduce anybody you've got with you. Thank you. Our next recommendation is a principal at Roland Grice. It is my pleasure to recommend Charles Broadfoot. Mr. Broadfoot currently serves as the assistant principal at Williston Middle School, previously served as a teacher, as administrative substitute at George Middle School in Polton, Oregon, a teacher at the Anne Arundel County Public Schools in Maryland. Mr. Broadfoot was a member of the NACS Assistant Leadership Academy this year. His contract will begin July 30th, 2016, I mean July 13th, my apologies, and be in effect until June 30th, 2018. He received his bachelor's degree in middle grade education from the University of North Carolina Wilmington, and a master's degree at Lewis and Clark College in Oregon. It is my pleasure to recommend Mr. Broadfoot for Roland Grice Middle School.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
Mr. Broadfoot. Do you have a guest with you? Or are you here? I said, do you have a guest that you hear by yourself? Where? It all runs through Laney to East Carolina. All right. We now move to assistant principal recommendations. The first recommendation is Alicia Sheasley. She has served as a special education teacher at Myrtle Grove Middle School since 1996. She completed her internship at Myrtle Grove. Her contract will run August 11th until June 30th, 2018. She has a bachelor's degree from Wake Forest and a special ed license from the University of North Carolina Wilmington. She received her master's in executive leadership with add-on license in school administration, also from the University of North Carolina Wilmington. My pleasure to recommend Alicia Sheasley.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
Ms. Sheasley here?
I am.
All right. Now who do you have with you? Our next recommendation also for Williston is Mr. Brad Lewis. Mr. Lewis currently serves as an assistant principal at North Brunswick High School, previously served as a teacher and coach at West Brunswick. His contract will be in effect July 18th until June 30th, 2018. He received his bachelor's degree in US history with an education certificate and a master's degree in administration, all from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. I recommend Mr. Brad Lewis. Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
Mr. Lewis, if you'll stand up. Now, do you have anyone with you? Next, Mr. Lewis is returning back home to New Hanover County. Our next recommendations for assistant principal at Forest Hills Global Elementary School, and that recommendation is Graham Elmore. Mr. Elmore completed his principal internship at College Park and at Hargard High School this past year. Previously, he served as a teacher at Roland Grice and a baseball coach at New Hanover High School. Mr. Elmore is a North Carolina Principal Fellow and Teaching Fellow recipient. His administrative contract will be effective from July 18th, 2016, and will be in effect until June 30th, 2018. He received his BA degree in middle grade education and master's degree in administration, both from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. Mr. Graham Elmore.
Move for approval. Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
I introduce Mr. Graham Elmore. Our final administrative recommendation for the evening is for assistant principal at DC Virgo. The recommendation is Mr. Kenneth Davis. Mr. Davis completed his internship at Laney High School and at Kennedy Stem Middle School in Charlotte, previously served as a teacher at Kennedy Stem Middle School and a support teacher in Wake County Public Schools, special education teacher in Prince George's County and Upper Marlboro, Maryland. Mr. Davis's contract will be in effect from July 13th, 2016 until June 30th, 2018. He has a bachelor's degree in psychology from NCANT, a master's degree in public administration from Bowie State, and his administrative licensure from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. I introduce Mr. Kenneth Davis.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
Mr. Davis? And who have something with you? Mr. Davis is another former New Hanover's person coming back home. My apologies, I did miss one. It's my oversight. I have a recommendation for assistant principal at Holly Shelter Middle School, Mr. Scott Carter. Mr. Carter completed his principal internship at Myrtle Grove Middle School and Eaton Elementary this past year. Previously served as a teacher and athletic director, beginning teacher mentor, PDS coordinator, and social studies department chair at Myrtle Grove Middle School. Mr. Carter's contract will begin August 11th and be in effect until June 30th, 2018. He received his bachelor's degree in middle grade education and his master's degree in school administration, both from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. Recommend Mr. Scott Carter.
Mr. Prizzle.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's approved.
Mr. Carter is here? And it looks like you got some folks with you. Welcome aboard. That completes the administrative recommendations.
I know I kept hearing Laney High School, Dr. Holliday, but I'm not going to ask for a show of hands of how many may have attended One of Park Elementary. I'm not going to, I won't go there. Okay, next item on the agenda, item seven, Head Start. Item A, Head Start Report. Ladies on, Mr. Edward Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Began with the general report here, which everyone can see. This is the May and June report. Currently have 260 students enrolled, which is the maximum number we are allowed. 128 three-year-olds, 131 four-year-olds, and there's 67 on a wait list. And I don't know exactly what we need to do to be able to expand our program, but it seems likely that if there is a way to expand it, we need to be looking at that. You can see the breakdown. I will not read those to you. I would highlight at the bottom of this report, program specialist Lisa Goldman out of Atlanta made a visit here on the 21st. I did get a copy of an email from her where she commented how well the program was being run and how much she appreciated being here. There was a directors caucus meeting held the week of the 20th here in Wilmington, and as I stated before, right now, we are fully enrolled for the 2016, 2017 year. Now, if I move to the next appendix, which is B, speaking of the budget, as you can see, we have, we have a budget. We have not spent any money yet, so everything is still there, but we have a budget of $1.924 million for purpose, for the purpose of education. For professional development, we have $26,843 to be used for that purpose. As I have, think I pointed out before, the Head Start budget runs from May, is it May or April? May, May 1st, not July 1st like most state budgets do or other governmental budgets do, but this is from May 1st. But as of yet, no money has been encumbered, no money has been spent. So that just gives you an idea of what we have been allocated for the coming year. The next item is the Self-Assessment Improvement Plan, and you know, this is rather cumbersome. I'm not going to try to go through it. You can see it. It is on the agenda, but what you basically see under this- But what you basically see under this is what are we expected to do? Who is expected to be responsible for it? If there are outside resources, what are those resources? And how often should these things be done? Now I've spoken about this before. There are goals, there are outcomes, and there are action steps. And so each one of those is defined. And you can, well, you can read for yourself that what's supposed to come under each one of those goals and who is supposed to do it. So I would just encourage you at your leisure, if you will, if you haven't already looked at it, to take a look at it. Ms. Smiley is here, if somebody has a specific question about any one of these goals or action steps by the...
Ms. Higgins, I do have a question about the parent participation. You see you have a goal to increase your parent participation.
Yes.
What precipitated that as a goal?
Well...
Is there a problem? And I mean, I know you've spoken about this before and you've sort of lamented the fact that
Thank you.
You've had trouble getting parent participation.
Thank you for bringing that up. The, there has been some real issues. I have been to meetings of the council where it was almost questionable whether or not we were going to be able to have the meeting because 50% of the people in attendance have to be parents. And luckily, it doesn't say over 50%, because there have been some meetings where 50% have been parents and 50% have been outside individuals. And there were only like eight or nine of us there, so you can see. The last meeting I went to, I did not get to go to the most recent meeting, but the meeting prior to that, we had 12? I think we had 12 people there. It's getting better, but I mean, it's, we're trying to address what can we do? I mean, it's a time. We've tried having them at 9:30 in the morning. We've generally had them at 5 o'clock. We have them a lot of times either at Johnson itself or at Spencer. We are reaching out, Head Starts reaching out to the parents to encourage them to participate because quite frankly, as I think everybody understands, we don't need another one of those Harvard studies, but we know that if parents are involved in their children's education, children have a better chance of being successful. And so all we can do is try and get these parents involved. We tell them when they sign their child up that we have an expectation, but you know, having an expectation, we don't really have any... Like charter schools, we can't throw the kid out because their parents are not participating, so...
Why not?
Well, because we're dealing with the federal government, for one thing.
I know we're dealing with the federal government, but as we all know, parent involvement is good. And if they know going in that they're going to be required to attend whatever, I don't see, there's such a demand, I don't see why we can't provide it to the parents who want to be involved.
I, you know, all I can say to you, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree that parental involvement, as we all know, is key to, like I said, key to a child's success. And I've told parents on numerous occasions when they've called me, generally complaining about what school their child's being sent to, that their child will be successful if they're involved in their child's education. I mean, my children, not to say anything, but my children went to Gregory, Williston, and New Hanover. Two of my kids now have master's degrees. One is a member of the United States Air Force. They're all successful, out of the house. I don't anticipate them coming back to live with me.
You hope.
I hope. But the point I want to make is, is because we were involved in their education. The studies have shown in the military, there's schools that are run by the United States government and on military basis, there's virtually, there's virtually no difference between what Caucasian students do and what non-Caucasian students do in those schools. But one of the reasons is that in the military, if your child is disruptive, is not participating, is not doing what they're supposed to be, you get a call from the commanding officer. And the one thing you don't want to do in the military is get a call from a commanding officer. Is that right, Don?
True.
And so they make sure that parents are involved and take part. So in answer to your question, I don't know why we can't put them out other than it's this idea that if we put them out, all we're doing is hurting the child. That's all I can tell you.
But if we can give that opportunity, since
To those other 67.
There's so many people who want that service for their child. And if we can give that opportunity to someone who's going to be involved, we will have a more successful student. I mean, it's almost useless to have them in a class without parental participation because they're not going to do as well. And we're just going to struggle with the child, trying our best.
Well, can we hear from Ms. Smiles about what she feels about this? Because it's the student that we're talking about and their outcomes. And if we're talking about the students and the ones who are most needy, are we talking about, would it be to their benefit to stay in? Even if their parents are not in, can we encourage the parents to come in over time? I mean, is that what we are trying to encourage? Not to put you on the spot, but I thought that was the purpose of this program.
You've got to consider the child. And the child benefits from being in that program?
Well, that's, the next slide points to that fact.
And you're talking about, the struggle this year was Policy Council, which is our governing board. So that looks a little different than such as our PTA or our parent committee meetings. When we fed them well and presented great information, we rocked that place, like over 72 parents. So what Mr. Higgins is really addressing is the struggle that we had to get our parents that are elected to the council. And you are correct, what we can do is after three meetings, if they do not attend, we can replace them with another representative, and that is done.
On the council.
On the council, mhm. But we cannot kick their children out.
But as far as participation with the parents in general, whose children are attending the school, you've had good response in terms of involvement with their children in the program itself?
It wasn't consistent, but it was much better than previous years and much better than the policy governing board. And it depended on, it was time certain, depended on the topic. But we're building those relationships. And again, it was only year two, and we're really excited about 16, 17. And we've switched up our strategies based on our self-assessment data and trying to really unique, because we know that these are the students that need to be in and these are the parents that need to be served, as discussed.
Well, because I think, I think, you know, to your point, you know, in a short-term situation, for the student, yes, it's a good, it's a good place for them to be. But in a long-term strategy, if that continues, you know, we're dealing with long-term situations where, you know, the school system sort of becomes a surrogate parent. And that's not what we're after. You know, we want parents involved in their children's education because that's the best, as Mr. Higgins said and as Mrs. Kavanaugh stated, that ensures the best outcome for the student. And so we want to make sure that parents understand that that's, that's participation and that partnership is the best place for the parent. It's what's best for the student. So short-term, yes, it's a good place, it's good for the child to be there. And we certainly don't want to punish a student for their parents not participating. But long-term, it's got to be the goal.
Yeah, and the beauty of that is that's part of our performance standards and a part of our framework, and it's required. So that's why we're continuously trying to improve, switch up our avenues, whatever we need to do to meet those needs. Because you're exactly right.
I'm glad to see that you are, you're constantly shifting and changing and your strategies to accommodate and to try to work with the parents to, you know, to get them to see and understand. Because a lot of times I think parents don't realize the value, even in small ways, of their participation and their involvement. So I appreciate that.
Well, and you're trying to change a lot in two years. You know, you're doing something in the short-term that hopefully will take root and affect us in the long-term. So I appreciate your work.
My question. Mr. Higgins alluded to, you have 67 on a waiting list. Are you limited in expanding, or is that a funding issue?
Are we limited with 260 enrollment for Head Start students?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. We are limited to 260 students.
And is that just the parameters of the program? Okay.
Thank you.
So anyway, I would encourage you, you know, to review this. If you have any other questions, I will try to answer them or I'll get Ms. Smiley to answer them.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Higgins, we're asking for approval of this document.
Okay, well, do I need to, this one, do I need to do the next one before?
This one.
This one, okay.
The next one is for information.
The next one's just data?
Yes.
Okay, well then I need, move that we approve the child outcome, no, the Self-Assessment Report.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? Others in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's approved.
All right, the next document is called the Child Outcome Report. And again, it's an extensive report, a lot of information in it. I'm just going to kind of highlight some things. Number one is the fact that three-year-old girls are ahead of the boys in their meeting expectations in the program. However, four-year-old boys are ahead of the girls in meeting expectations. With respect to the other demographics, four-year-olds who came in were met, 35% met expectations by the spring, 82.4 met expectations. Three-year-olds, 74.3% met the expectations of a three-year-old. They had raised that to 91.5% by the spring semester. With respect to the social and emotional development, meeting or exceeding expectations in the spring, 95.2% of four-year-olds, 96.9% of three-year-olds. There were, however, you know, the number who did not meet expectation in the fall dropped from eight to four, three-year-olds, and from 15 to seven, and four-year-olds. Physical development, hold on one minute. 100% of three-year-olds were met expectations, 99.2%. So I mean, there's no real issues with their physical development. Language development. 92.9% of four-year-olds in the spring exceeded expectations. 97.3% of three-year-olds exceeded expectations. So I mean, you know, I see that this program is doing some real benefits for our three and four-year-olds. I mean, I realize, three-year-olds, you look at and you say, well geez, I mean, why isn't the four-year-olds doing as well as the three-year-olds? The level for a three-year-old is not quite as high as it is for a four-year-old. But nevertheless, we're doing well with the four-year-olds. So again, cognitive development, four-year-olds, 93.7; three-year-olds, 98.1. Literacy development, four-year-olds, 98.2; three-year-olds, 97.8. Mathematical development, three-year-olds, 97.7; four-year-olds, 88.9. In other words, things are really serving a useful purpose. Lastly, the very last page, page 13 of 13, talks about a program called CLASS, C-L-A-S-S. It is the evaluation tool that the people from Atlanta, when they come to check Head Start, they use. I happened to be there when a group came in from... One was from Mississippi, one was from South Carolina, and I forget where the third one was from, I think Tennessee. But they bring in a group and they observe. They're there for three days. Federal government pays them to come and do this. And they observe what goes on in the school using this CLASS model, which is a model that the federal government has developed. And I'm happy to report that as a result of that, they had no recommendations of any changes that we needed to make this year, so... But we have also trained people at our school in the process of CLASS. So what they do is, before the folks get here from out of state, we have already sent some of our own people in to observe what's going on in the classroom so that they can, they can, they can make observations and tell the classroom teacher, this is something you need to be concerned with, this is something you need to be working on. I mean, for example, when I went to the Head Start Conference in Raleigh, one of the things they pointed out is, when students come into the classroom first thing in the morning, is the teacher smiling? Is the teacher welcoming to the students? Or are they distracted or standing up in front of the classroom, kind of ignoring the students as they walk in? So, you know, little things like that are what's important in Head Start because it's important that students understand that we want them to be successful. So, Mr. Chairman, that completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Item eight, under Information. Item A, Guidance for Implementing CTE Courses for Special Education Students, Appendix E, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Questions come up often. We've been talking a lot this year about CTE, not only in our schools, but the formation of the CTE High School, which many of you have been a part of. One of the questions came up and you all asked us to come with a presentation regarding how we were using our, how we were allowing our children with special needs, or special education students to access CTE classes. They are accessing them. Ms. Askew has put together a very short presentation. It's got a lot of information in it and there's a lot of, maybe some technical things in it. So you may have some questions about it. So we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Mrs. Askew will run through these fairly quickly and then any questions that you might have.
Good evening. I guess Don's helping me, okay. So I want to share with you the purposes overall of the collaboration between our Career Technical Education and our Special Education Departments. First of all, the main purpose is to maintain access of these courses for our students with disabilities. We want to make sure that we are providing the supports that they need to be successful, but also making sure that they are able to access the courses of their interest because that's going to be how they actually grow the most. Also, the guidance created in this joint collaboration is to really help our staff, our special education staff and our Career Technical Education staff with maintaining fidelity of the instruction. We know that if our staff are more equipped with abilities to accommodate and provide modifications for our students with disabilities, then they're going to, our students are going to grow many more skills in preparation for vocational activities and their post-secondary options. Also, making sure that we are supporting our staff in how the modified coursework or modified blueprints are documented in each individual student's IEP, their individual education plans. In addition, we want to make sure, of course, that we're following DPI policy compliance. There are some specific parameters on how we enroll students in courses, how students progress from one course to the other, and how credits are assigned when courses are completed. And then our overall of courses, after making sure our students can access the courses, making sure that they're growing and they're achieving in those courses. So the collaborative guidance, the Career Technical Education staff, including Director Laverne Pickett, our Secondary Transition Specialist for Special Education, Betsy Stanwood, and I have honestly spent hours pulling together the... and I, has honestly spent hours pulling together the joint guidance documents provided by the state, also looking at best practices, looking at every other policy or memo that's applicable to assigning course credits, state exams, all that kind of thing. And then following up with all of the questions from our CTE and special education staff in how to actually accomplish this. So we took the, the questions coming to us and took the guidance and created, instead of a Q and A, instead of a question and answer, really more of a guidance document from the questions and why are we doing this and how do we do this? So the guidance document, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna highlight all of these pieces because it does get quite technical and we would probably spend the better part of three or four hours going through this, but the professional development that we've provided jointly for our CTE staff and our special education staff goes through each of these pieces. And the highlights, we started in October after pulling together all of the information, but we've highlighted changes since we've gotten additional information from DPI and then additional questions from staff. The main points on this are, of course, to individualize for every student, making sure, I mean, for example, some questions right there, some questions have very quick answers. Do staff pass students to keep from teaching them as a repeater? No, this is unethical, we don't do that. We continue to teach our students until they gain the skills that they need. So the, the main information here is that we have an opportunity to take the CTE course blueprints. Each course has its blueprints with all of the, the goals and objectives or the course outline, and those actually are taken into the IEP meeting. And our CTE staff will help document for the IEP team and with the IEP team which course objectives will be taught maybe the first time through a CTE course. And then the, that blueprint with, for that student is held on file and then that student has the remaining objectives the next time they go through the course. Some of our students with disabilities can go through the CTE course first time with all objectives met and, and master and be very proficient and gain those job readiness skills. Some of our students with disabilities need to repeat and we need to make sure that we're chunking the information so they can be successful and not just giving the whole course to them over and over and it being watered down and then them getting a credit without having the skills attained. This four-page document goes into explanation on how credits are assigned on the transcript, how do we know if it's the student's first time or second time through? How do we know if they're on a modified blueprint? And the multi-digit course codes give us an opportunity to put different digits in the places to give a, a clue to our staff if this is the first time or if this is a modified blueprint and if this is a student under occupational course of study, that being their pathway toward graduation. Do you have any questions for me?
Question?
I have a question. What do you see as the biggest challenge with your students in OCS, doing the, the CTE classes? What have you, you know, what have you encountered and, and what have you felt like has been your biggest success?
Well, I think probably the one that's been the biggest challenge, we focused on the most, and so I think we found the biggest success with that. And there's a question in here about this. How do we know, at what point do we believe a student needs additional support in the class, meaning an additional paraeducator? Not for the student because that creates dependence and it, and it negates independence. And of course, with vocational skills, we're promoting independence as much as possible. But how do we know when we need to provide additional support in the classroom, another adult, whether it needs to be co-teaching with another special ed teacher or whether it needs to be a paraeducator joining in that class? And each of our, each of our high schools make those determinations, they, they have their staff allocation and they make the determinations based on how they need to assign staff to support students. So we had to get a little more specific with how, how many students do you have in your class with, on modified blueprints? How many of them require more prompting for their independence? How many of them have reading skills that make them more independent and how, how many have reading skills that, you know, the content, being content literate is difficult? So, kind of navigating how we assign additional supports and how the schools need to determine using additional supports has probably been the biggest challenge, but then also the biggest, biggest success. Does that answer the question? Okay. Any others?
Any other questions?
I have, just, I can't find it, so I'm just gonna ask it. I know one of the concerns I have heard, not just with, with special education students, but with all our students, is the lack of understanding financial environment. And I did note, I couldn't find the question here, but I did note that you had a, you did have a comment about that with the...
It's, it's about replacing a course or using a, a switch for financial management under CTE.
But I mean, is that, is that an elective that they can do or is that part of the blueprint?
So, the financial management course under CTE, and I'm not a CTE master...
Okay.
But I, I can answer this question. That is one of the CTE courses that can be taken, so it depends on whether it counts, it certainly counts as a CTE course, but for our students that might take it more than one time, they can take it with a modified blueprint so that they can take that course the first time and go through part of the objectives for the course, and then the second time through, they can do the remaining so that they have a, a higher concentration of those particular skills and they're more likely to master those. That is very important for us to be able to use that as one of the math credits. So when we're able to do that, unless legislation changes that, because that's a bill on the, that's a House bill on the floor right now, or maybe it's been decided and I haven't seen the results of that, I don't think we've found any result, I think it may be tabled. Ms. Estep and I were talking about that a couple of weeks ago. But having us, having school staff being allowed to use that personal finance or financial management as one of the math credits or courses actually is much more meaningful for our students with disabilities.
I agree.
It's also a, a course that's appropriate for students without disabilities.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, but we can use it as one of the required three math courses. We, we want to be able to continue to do that because it is so meaningful and we get such good results and such good feedback from our students and their families after having taken that course. But it can be a modified blueprint course.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item B, E Online Academy Presentation, appendix F, Dr. Smith.
Good evening. I'd like to just simply introduce Ms. Craft. She's going to be speaking to you about the next phase in the online academy offerings that we provide in the district. I think it's no secret throughout the state of North Carolina, the success that New Hanover County Schools has experienced with the use of NCVPS. Just this past year, we had more than three thousand four hundred courses in which our students enrolled with a annual pass rate of about ninety-three percent and students earning a grade of B or higher with, at about eighty percent. So, again, it's no secret across the state, the success that we're seeing, and so we're looking now to expand that to other folks who are not currently enrolled in our schools. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Craft.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank y'all for having me here tonight. I always love sharing the exciting things we have going on with online learning in our district. Let me first just share, in addition to what Dr. Smith said, we currently have middle and high school students in our district taking online courses. Some of them are taking the course as a complement to their school day, taking it as one of their periods on campus. Some of our students are using online courses to extend their school day as like a fifth block course maybe, and some are even using it to extend their school year, taking summer courses, like right now, we have over three hundred students taking summer courses for us. So in addition to using online as a tool in the toolbox of schools and parents and students to individualize these pathways for students, we, over the last two to three years, have had New Hanover County School students who with approval have been able to take all of their courses completely from home for any given semester. And with success, they can be approved to continue that process and work from home without ever coming on campus. Laney High School actually had one young lady graduate this June, having taken all but two of her credits completely from home, online, graduated with a solid B average with her classmates. Otherwise, we would not have been able to keep her in school. So we've been doing this for a couple of years, as far as having our students work completely from home when it's the best fit for that child. And that's what's important to keep in mind, the careful advising, careful scheduling to make sure it's a strong fit. What we're looking to do now is to expand this opportunity beyond our currently enrolled students, to begin actually recruiting students that aren't currently our students, notably the homeschool environment. If you'll, go ahead and scroll to the next. I'd like to talk to you just a second about the homeschool movement. As you can see, it's growing at a very fast pace, both nationally and then in North Carolina, it's growing at, at a tremendously high pace. The number of families and students that are opting out of the public school environment and into the homeschool environment, and that's something we have to take note of. Just this last year, we had approximately fifty students that were New Hanover County School students leave us to go to the homeschool movement and homeschool environment. We now have an opportunity to meet their needs in that at-home environment, but taking online courses. And I'd like to share just real quickly, I've had a unique opportunity over the last year to network with a lot of homeschool families in this area. And what I've learned, what they've shared, is there, there are mostly two reasons that they're turning to homeschool. One is for religious reasons, and then the second is they are looking for that at-home small environment where parents can be very connected with what and how their students are learning. Along with that, though, came some challenges these families shared. One was it's, it, the, the content begins to get more and more complex as students move through high school, and so the families are having to turn to digital curriculum and textbooks to help supplement and allow those families to continue to support their students in the homeschool environment, which is very expensive. Yes, sir?
How cooperative is the homeschool organization in putting you and, giving you information so that you can directly contact homeschoolers?
So actually, that is my next area I'm going. I've done some researching, there are nine different regions across the state of the Homeschool Alliance, and I've begun putting out feelers, but I wanted to make sure that we've gotten everyone on board before we fully launch this.
I, I saw a program several times at the National School Board Association, and, and obviously, it's just one program.
Sure.
The University of Nebraska has a homeschool program that, that public schools can utilize. So I, I'm sure it's, it's, it's a growing industry, if you will.
Absolutely. And, and we've actually been invited to, to join the homeschool conference each summer, and so that's something that maybe this next summer we'll look at, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
But so, thinking about the obstacles that these homeschool families are having, again, we can help meet those needs. So how would this look if there were a family, let's say in New Hanover County, who is currently homeschooling their students? Now, this would only be available at high school level because the courses we would utilize are NCVPS courses, over a hundred and fifty available, but the majority are high school content courses. So the high school course catalog, if you would, for NCVPS would only be available to support those ninth through twelfth grade kiddos. So, the family that lived in New Hanover County Schools, if they, if we had that conversation and they felt like this is a strong match for my child, they can continue to work from home, take their online courses, we can be involved. They're not in that big school, some of the families talked about the big schools that they didn't want to get involved in. So what we would do is that family would need to enroll into New Hanover County Schools, they would enroll into the E Academy at Mosley. Once enrolled into the E Academy at Mosley, we would enroll them into the online courses, we would support them through the online courses, just like we do with all of our other online learners. If they needed additional support, we have the lab there on campus, they could come too if need be, but there are a lot of tools nowadays, we can support them virtually, and many of the same needs can be met without them physically coming onto a campus. The only times they would have to come on a campus would be to take a CTE or an EOC final exam, that are the state mandated exams. So what would the benefits be to the students and the families? There's a ton of courses available for these families. You're talking everything from AP to honors to on-level courses. There are courses that would meet needs for students with IEPs, 504s, not that they couldn't take all of those, but broad variety of courses, from content to electives to world languages, and it's a growing catalog, so that's a benefit to the families. They would be able to maintain that at-home, small environment that they're looking for with the parents being very involved in what and how their child is being taught. And I can tell you, if any of you have had a child taking an NCVPS course, it's as transparent as you can imagine. The parent can literally see everything that's being taught, every piece of feedback, everything the child submits, everything is right there for you. So that would be something that would be appealing to many of these families I've spoken with. And then finally, it's free to them. We, as a district, would pay, but there is no fee that would be charged to the students or the families. Finally, it would be an equalizer for us, and notice I have the map of North Carolina there. This is an opportunity that certainly we would like to offer to our New Hanover County families that are currently homeschooling, hoping to recruit some of them back into our district, but we can look beyond district lines with this E Academy at Mosley. If there are families in Brunswick County who this would be a strong fit, we can recruit them in. If there are families in Pender County, we can recruit them in. And I'll tell you, we're not the largest district in the state, but we're the third largest user of NCVPS. There are many districts in our state that are less than a hundred enrollments on any given year. Dr. Smith just shared, we had about thirty-five hundred-ish this year. So we are very forward-thinking, if you would, as far as how to use this tool to meet students' needs, so we can help to support the needs of not only our New Hanover County School residents, but even residents from other districts.
And we, we say that because we've actually had inquiries from outside of our district about accessing online through us because their home district didn't offer online programs. So we're not going out looking to steal students from districts that have their own online programs, but if there are students out there who can't access this, and then they would come to us and then, of course, they become part of our ADM and the state all of that.
That's what I wanted to ask, is, as an online student, do we get any ADM money for that?
I love where you're going with that, yes, sir.
Yes.
But, but the testing on campus would be the only limitation, would it not?
Correct. That's the only time they'd have to come on campus. And that's a beautiful segue because we absolutely would get their ADM. So let me just real quickly share, Mosley staff, it would benefit them significantly, it would add to their enrollment while having minimal impact on their facility or their staff. We need, would need their support with counseling and that course advisement piece, and then their NCVPS team to support those students. That would really be the bulk of it. This is what I think you're looking for. So what does it mean to us as a district? Again, it's a big, a win for us, it's a benefit. So in talking with Mary, Ms. Mary Hazel Small, she shared with me the numbers for the, what we get, state funding and local funding per student, about seventy-seven hundred dollars. Now, we would need to deduct from that what we pay for an NCVPS fully enrolled high school student, four courses fall, four courses spring. It's about twenty-eight hundred dollars, which leaves the district in excess of almost five thousand dollars per student, per year, for each child we recruited in. So again, it's a win-win. It expands opportunities and options for these families while supporting our district.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm a little confused. I understand getting the state allotment, but I don't understand us getting twenty-seven hundred dollars per student from the county commissioners.
Remember, our, our current funding is, is, is a per pupil average, and it's actually, actually, it's twenty-six sixty based on the budget, so that was, now, if a student came to us from another, another district, no, we wouldn't see those, their share of the local fund.
I didn't think so, so I thought that twenty-seven hundred dollars was...
That would be, that would only be for New Hanover County students who enroll.
Yeah, I realized that.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
My question is, of the students that are currently using this virtual public school system...
Yes, sir.
Do we do surveys to see, get feedback from them on how they like it or don't like it and how we can improve?
Absolutely. We actually, each year, survey the students, we survey the parents, we survey the school staff, and then we survey the NCVPS staff. And, and for different purposes, we survey each of those stakeholders, but ultimately to find out what, how are we doing as a support structure for these students? Not only advising and scheduling them appropriately, but then supporting them through that online course.
And what have you learned from the surveys?
The biggest thing we've learned is parents want to be involved, they want to be more involved. That's probably the biggest feedback we get each year. It, it's been especially our middle school families, want to be more involved, want to know more about it. Students are happier now with some of the tech pieces, now that NCVPS is going to one common platform, whereas before, there were three platforms, caused a little bit of confusion sometimes. The state, the NCVPS stakeholders love us because so many districts, their students sign up for an online course, they're put in the course, good luck, four months, we'll check on you. And in our district, our students have so many layers of support. They have weekly progress monitoring, they have support with... They have weekly progress monitoring, they have support with pacing, with navigation, helping them advocate for themselves, because they can't raise their hand in an online course to ask a question. And so we really try to help not only wrap them in support, but encourage them to be more independent learners, because truly, we want to individualize their pathway towards whatever their goal is, and we want them to step out there and begin to take initiative for what that end game is for them. So, but we certainly use that certain feedback.
At the end of the day, there are some students who, online learning is not their method or modality for learning. And that's fine. This is not a program that every student has to take, but for some students who are particularly self-motivated, and that comes at all spectrums at the academic level, we have students who do much better online than they do in face-to-face classes. So, but there are going to be some who struggle with an online environment.
I would think also that with the, I know this has come up in the past, with homeschool parents and others that, like the arts, athletics, things of that nature, that if they are enrolled, then I would think that would also open the door into areas such as that, that I think parents would like.
There's some opportunities to get very, to get creative, and maybe do some partnering with a, what would have been a homeschool, for to access some of those pieces. But we'll take those individually and work with those.
Absolutely.
And we want to take this in small bites.
Yes.
We're going to do this element one bite at a time, not the whole thing.
Yes, and that, yes ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jeanette.
If a homeschool student doesn't have the capabilities of the online equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Would we be responsible for providing that?
I would like to see us be able to support that. Now, it may take a little bit of time for us to build the funds, but I would like to see us to be able to purchase some laptop Kajit bundles. We currently have that for our traditional high schools, so that we could have those as a checkout opportunity if those families need it. And the Kajit is a hotspot, so they would have both the computer and the internet access. That's where we'd like to go with it, yes, ma'am.
I could see this for New Hanover County students. I think the real issue is going to be when you start expanding outside of New Hanover County, because then I believe that the expectation would be that the other counties would supplement the cost above and beyond what the state provides. In other words, if we get 2,650 from New Hanover County for our students, we're not going to want to provide it for out-of-county students unless we're getting something equivalent.
I believe we're getting the 5,000 for our students, is that right, the state?
Well, from the state.
Right.
And we get the 5,000 from the state, I mean, kind of like it is now with the charter school.
Certainly.
We would get it because we have the students.
Right.
But with all the other things you're talking about, that's where the $4,900 you've got there would go, for additional counselors, potentially for computers.
Right.
In county, I can see it.
Right.
We're going to have to have some kind of, if not a memorandum of understanding with other counties, we're going to have to have some kind of policy that addresses what happens, just like if a student wants to come to New Hanover County, which in the past, we have not allowed students to do that unless their parents were teaching here or working here in the school system, because of the cost and the level of offerings we give in New Hanover County compared to what some surrounding counties provide. So I think that's one of the discussions that's going to have to be had, is what happens if a student from Pender or Columbus or, because again, except for a couple of trips here, they could be in Columbus, they could be in Wake County.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we, I think we need to have, we're going to have to explore, if we start expanding out of New Hanover County, how that's going to function.
Now, we currently do take out-of-county students as a sort of an employee privilege.
Yes.
We don't, there is no agreement, the other county has to release a student to us.
Right, just like we do.
That's the only, that's the only real requirement. Now, in terms of addition, we don't get additional cost, we don't get funds from that count, so we're only getting the state funds for the.
But we're getting credit for, from the New Hanover County based on our enrollment.
But given the cost of about $2,900 per year, I think we balance out here pretty well. I think we come out ahead.
Well, I mean, you know, I'd just like to know that we're not operating a lost loser on, but taking outside students.
But it, but.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about New Hanover County students.
No, I'm saying, right, but even for an outside, well, I just figured this, was that if you receive roughly 5,000, and if you're paying 2,800 for the courses, instead of making the 4,900 like you would make on the New Hanover County students, you'd only be making 2,200.
But then you're paying $1,000 for a computer, you're paying for counselors, you know.
Some of these costs are fixed no matter what.
Right. But, I mean, I could see, let, I mean, just say hypothetically, this takes off. We get 500, well, not 500, New Hanover County students, I'd love to have 500.
Wouldn't be something.
Yes. But let's say we get 100 out-of-county students, and they're coming from poorer counties, they're coming from Jones County, they're coming from Hope County, they're coming from Columbus County, and that's with, do apologies to anybody that are not necessarily saying anything nasty, but, you know, these are students who maybe do not have the wherewithal, as was suggested, for the internet, for the, and we're having to pick up that, or we're picking up that cost of.
I think we do a cost analysis to make sure. I mean, I think we can do less than a thousand dollar computer, definitely, so I still think we would come out ahead.
But that's what we need to do, the cost analysis.
But I don't want to shut the avenue off.
We're not, we're not having to eat money to have this program.
And I think your concern is definitely noted. As this were to grow, I think we're going to have to look at that cost analysis piece. As of right now, we can certainly add on at least the first two years of cohorts without impacting the Mosley staffing at a negative impact.
We're going to take this in small bites.
Now, once we continue to grow.
Start small.
Well, I think, I think, I think we may be sort of overestimating the trust level of our homeschool parents here.
I agree.
Because, you know, making the decision to homeschool is not a light decision.
I agree.
So, you know, we, you know, you stated that there are religious reasons, and, you know, parents want a small environment, I think there's a lot of distrust of the public school system.
I agree.
And so, you know, just to sort of play devil's advocate here, when parents view this, this as a, and this may seem a little harsh, but view this as sort of a money-making scheme from the public school system, you know, they look at this as 20, what was it, $2,800 is what the school system, what the cost of my child's enrollment to the school system will be, and then the remainder, 63% of it is basically profit. They're going to look at this as, as not such a benefit to them, as more of a benefit to the school system. So, you know, when they look at that, they're going to, they're going to question the motives and motivation here. And I'm just looking at that from a, you know, from a parent who's looking at the school system in a very skeptical light.
Can I, can I?
No.
Say a little bit then?
No, you cannot. And I can say that as a former Laney grad.
That's fine.
But I'm just saying, without having, do you have estimates of people who have said, yes, I want to, you know, I want to enroll my children? Or are you just basing this on, you know, we feel like there will be this, you know, because.
Great question.
Dr. Holliday, I guess you really can't say anything.
No, I'm, you're not, you're not saying, I'll let you know when you speak. But what, I'm kidding, Dr. Holliday. But, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing, we're seeing people leave the public school system in droves. We're not seeing a reverse of this anytime soon, at least, at least not in my, in my experience. So rather than look at what is, what is it that is driving parents away and trying to make some changes that will entice parents back into the system physically, you know, I don't see this as a, you know, I see this as sort of a panacea. That's just my viewpoint, and I'll let you answer that, and then I'll let Dr. Holliday speak.
Absolutely. And I would just say that over the last year, in the spring semesters, I probably get two to three phone calls a week from families interested in just this. And I've always had to say, I'm really sorry, we don't have this opportunity available at this point, especially for those out of our district, in our neighboring districts, is where I get most of the phone calls. So this would give us that opportunity to say, we now have a pathway, we now have an opportunity to be able to help support you. I can say that we have three families that back in, gosh, May-ish, were ready to just say absolutely right now, yes. We as a district weren't quite ready yet. And so have they already found other plans for this fall? I don't know. So once we get to that point, hopefully in the next week or so, I'll be able to reach out to them and say, we now have that pathway, we're ready to go. I do think it's going to take some huge building of trust. I think that is very noted, for whatever reason, they have been disengaged with the public school system. So I think that that's a great point, and I think that.
I think a lot of that has to do with Common Core, to be completely honest with you.
I think relationships are going to be huge.
A lot of it has to do with the curriculum, with a lot of negativity in the press around Common Core, but.
You're right, Tammy, because I know of homeschooling parents who won't even let their children take driver's ed with the public school, because they don't want anything to do with the public school. And it's unfortunate, but you're completely right.
Right, and there's such a skepticism. But to be clear, parents who are not enrolled in the public school system, their children can take online courses, they have to pay for them.
Certainly, yes. They have to pay through the state, and they're about $500 a course for the family to pay through the state, yes, ma'am. And the state's actually seeing a growing number of homeschool families paying for those courses through the state.
We see that this is not going to fit those folks who don't like, who absolutely aren't going to put their kids in public education. But we think, and when you look at homeschooling, through the elementary and those K.A. years, it's doable. But when you get into the high school, for a lot of those folks who are homeschoolers, they run into that issue with, while they may have been great with math, they struggle a little bit with the other part. This is, this is going to feel what we think is a niche. We don't anticipate opening the doors and having 500 kids roll in the next day. You saw her numbers, next year, we'd like to try this with up to about 20 kids, and then roll out from there. So really, what I'm asking the board for tonight is permission for us to sort of, to begin this process, to do some trial runs this fall with this, and then come back to you about expanding it at the end of next year.
I think, I think this is something we need to be doing. I was just telling Ms. Nichols, I saw, the reason I brought up the Nebraska program was I saw it at a national school board meeting probably 10, 15 years ago, and I inquired about it, you know, could we do this? And they were, you know, so I think it is something that we need to be doing, both for the benefit of students, because I'm, I've always said, and maybe I'm a little naive, but, you know, I have three degrees, and I would hate to be trying to teach a student high school science, high school algebra, I might could teach a little history and civics, but I just don't think I'd be qualified to teach science and algebra, and I know I wouldn't be qualified to teach a foreign language. And I think, as you suggest, once you get to high school, there are, it becomes much more technical, much more complicated, unless you happen to be, you know, well-versed in those subjects.
Right.
Or can create some cohort where I teach your kids and you teach my kids type situation, it becomes, I would believe, very troublesome. And I think this is an opportunity for us to benefit, and also for those students to benefit, and yet retain that, that small school environment, if you will.
If you would be making it available for those parents that want to participate. I mean, it's a voluntary thing if they want to do it.
Right, but the issue is that, once they're enrolled in this program, they're technically enrolled in the public school system, the New Hanover County Schools gets the state and local dollars. And that's, I think that's the sticking point that is going to, that's going to probably cause a lot of the homeschool parents to question.
But the parents are going to save, if it's $500 a course, 3,500, $4,000, I mean, I would, I wish the opportunity to save $4,000 a year.
Well, then, you know, then why not, why not just allocate that amount of money toward the public school system and nothing more? The cost of the program and not.
But there's other overheads to go with it, there's other things to go with it.
See, that's my point, that's my point. Because what will happen is now we've got to allocate another position for it, we've got, you know, we're expanding.
We actually chose Mosley specifically because we think we can handle it with the current staff we have in place. This is not a program where I'm asking you to give me, give me more people, not unless we get to 100, then we'll have that conversation.
Do you need a motion, or do you just want a consensus?
I'd like, we'd like your permission, so, to go forward, and do it on a very, very small scale this fall.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'll make sure I understand, Ms. Kraft. Your literature here says there are, we currently offer over 150 courses.
Yes, sir.
And I think you're also saying there's some 2,800 homeschoolers in New Hanover County now. How many students that we, do we currently have on the virtual program? About?
It's hard for me to give you that exact number. We have about 34 to 3,500 enrollments. Now, some of those students are taking multiple courses, so that doesn't mean 3,500 students necessarily, but 3,500 courses were accessed this last school year. So if I were to make an educated guess, I would say probably somewhere in the ballpark of 2,800 students or so taking courses.
And we have them from middle school all the way through, we have some middle schoolers who are accelerating with this. And so we could actually, we could, if you had an advanced middle schooler, we could have a conversation about them doing this as well, online with us.
And how many teachers do you have currently that monitor their progress?
Great question. So on each of our four traditional high schools, we have a dedicated person that we call a virtual academy coordinator, and they are really a lab facilitator on steroids, if you would. They do a phenomenal job of wrapping those students in support, communicating with all the stakeholders and so forth. Mosley has a dedicated virtual academy coordinator who is actually shared with a couple of schools, offering additional support for those schools that have smaller enrollments. And then our middle schools have shared virtual academy coordinators, because their enrollments are so much smaller than our big high schools. And so every one of our schools participating with NCVPS has a virtual academy coordinator. Some are shared folks, some are dedicated folk, just depending on your enrollments. But they're all receiving the same supports, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I'll do it as a favor before you say aye. Aye. opposed?
Opposed.
Six wants. Thank you.
Have a good time for the week.
Thank you. I know the next one will be very short, but before we do that, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Thank you.
Before I assume.